Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It's now January 21st, 2014, 6:00 PM here in the City Hall at 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. We call this council meeting to order. I'd like to call upon Reverend Bill Miller with the Lake Granbury Ministerial Alliance to lead us in our invocation, followed with the pledge allegiance, followed by the Texas pledge. All rise, please.
Can we all bow our heads, please? Most loving Father, we come to you tonight to ask for your blessing and empowerment upon this place and upon this group of special people that you have personally placed in their positions of leadership. We thank you, Father, for these special people, and we pray for your wisdom, for your direction, for your insight, for your humility, and for your love to prevail here tonight as they deliberate and decide and develop plans together for the governance of our city. We pray also for those assembled here tonight, God, that you would bless each person here and each family. We give you praise for their good works and for their commitment to your well done in all things. May all that is said and done in this place tonight glorify you in the name of Jesus. And this is a good place to say amen.
Amen.
God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you. Please follow me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas flag.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one
One quick note here, Dee. I want to note that Councilman Gary Couch will not be with us tonight. His father has taken ill, so we want to preach out our prayers to him. He had to go out of town, but he won't be with us tonight. At this time, I'd like to call upon Mitch Galvan to award us an award ceremony to present medals to six police officers involved in the shooting incident of June 28th, 2013.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Senate Manager. I appreciate you allowing me this opportunity to present these very special awards. June 28th, 2013 will be a date remembered by many, but it will be a day that will be forever etched in the minds and hearts of all the law enforcement officers in this county. It was a day when everyone in this community, maybe for the first time, completely understood the harsh reality and inherent danger law enforcement officers face every day they do their job. To many, it also brought about the harsh reality that those things can and do happen here in Granbury, USA. It was a day when this community saw firsthand the dedication and commitment the law enforcement agencies in this county had to working with and assisting one another without any hesitation. It was a day that we will remember as the day we suffered the greatest loss of all, the loss of one of our own. It was also a day that can very easily been remembered as a much more tragic day than it already is. You see, if it had not been for six officers who put their lives up as a wall between a heavily armed man and the citizens of Granbury, the losses would have been far more than our thoughts could bear. These officers faced a barrage of gunfire from a man who was standing just a short distance away and armed with more firepower and ammunition than they had, yet they held their ground. Putting their own lives before others, these officers stood firm and fought back, and they did so with such incredible courage. They are shining example of what it means to put the life of another before your own. Only they didn't just say it, they did it. Mayor, would you please come down and join me at this time, please? This time, I'd like to call the following officers to the front of the council chambers. Please, Hood County Sheriff Roger Deeds and his wife, Shawn. Lieutenant Lynn McDonald of the Hood County Sheriff's Office and his wife, Margaret. Lieutenant Johnny Rose, Hood County Sheriff's Office and his wife, Lucinda. And DPS State Trooper Thomas Anderson and his wife, Autumn. Gentlemen, it gives me great honor to be here before you today, and because of the tremendous courage you showed on June 28th, 2013, it is my honor to award each and every one of you the Granbury Police Department Medal of Valor. I would now like to call Granbury Police Officer Garrett Wigginton to the front and Garrett, not only did you display incredible courage on June 28th, but you also displayed an incredible sense of awareness. Right after Officer Davis received the second gunshot wound, he began moving in a direction to find cover. While still engaged in gunfire with a suspect, you noticed Officer Davis moving behind you in the direction of another officer's fire. You immediately called out to Officer Davis to prevent him from walking through the line of fire of another officer and directed him to get covered directly behind you, all the while staying engaged in the fight. Your courage and actions are testament to your commitment to your fellow officers, to this community, and to the badge. Because of your courage, exceptional situational awareness under fire, Garrett, it is my distinct Now I'd like to call Officer Chad Davis and his wife, Carrie, to the front. Chad, I'm not really sure when I was thinking about this word, I needed to start with you. So I'm just going to start with the thing that stood out to me, that still stands up to me to this day. Those were the first things you said to me at the hospital that day. You said, "Chief, I'm sorry I left cover. I know I'm not supposed to. I know I'm supposed to stay behind cover, but three people standing in the porch area were in my line of fire, and the guy was looking right at them, and he got out of the van. I had to get a better angle on him and draw his attention away from those people, so I had to leave. I'm sorry, Chief." For me, that pretty much draws a pretty clear picture of who you are and what you stand for. I don't think I could put your actions that day into words that would truly give people a clear understanding of what you did, so that they would have the same reaction in their heart or gut that I do every time I think about it. To move out into the open, intentionally get a heavily armed man's attention so he starts shooting at you and not others, and to stand your ground the whole time during this gun battle, which resulted in you being shot twice, it's not just courageous, it's heroic. Chad, for your heroic actions that day, for the sacrifice you made to save others at the expense of being shot twice, it is my deepest honor to award you the Granbury Police
Detail. Law enforcement officers, attention! Present, homes! Order, homes!
Don't have much for the agenda. If we didn't close streets, we'd never have anything to fucking do.[874.81][874.81](laughing) Is that in the charter or is that text dotted? Are these street closures? Every time. We have to prove that our council has approved it.
Thank you, Mitch. And I might add to the citizens out there that that's just another example of what our law enforcement, it's a big example of what our law enforcement in Hood County is all about and why people come here because they really feel safe living in this community. And with that kind of historic actions, you know, I must agree that it's beyond the call of duty and it's what it takes to have a community such as ours. Congratulations once again to those folks. I'd like to move on next to the consent agenda item, which is the approval of the council minutes of the meeting of January 7th, 2014. Council, we've all had an opportunity to read those minutes and look at those over. At this time, are there any changes or amendments to the council minutes? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes for January 7th, 2014.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Parsons. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilwoman Myers. Any more discussion, council? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Those council minutes are approved. Next, I'd like to move into the deliberation agenda, the first one being consider and approve a bank depository contract beginning February 1st, 2014, and extending through January 31st, 2017, with a two-year extension option. I'd like to call upon Mrs. David Gregory to talk a little bit about it.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. The current depository contract with First National Bank had expired December 1st, 2013. We had exercised a three-month extension during the process of bidding the services out and having the time to review the bids. We had received three different bid proposals from local banks, First National Bank, Chase Bank, and First Financial Bank. The attached analysis of the offers are included in your packet detailing the fee structure, the interest rate that the different banks had offered, as well as the analysis of the services. They were very comparable. They offered similar services, and our decision was based on the analysis of the net dollar gain based on the interest rate that had offered plus the fees over a three-year time period, plus their stability and safety of the bank, banking institution. For example, do you want me to go into detail on the offering on the bank?
Council, is there any more information you need on that? I know you've had a chance to look at it in packets.
Is that office, is that our office?
Excuse me?
Yes, it's our office.
Yes, it's a three-year contract with one-year extension.
Yeah, we can actually move to it. We have the option in the First National Bank, we can move to the nine-year. It's better.
Yes, yes, yeah. They offer two different rates.
(inaudible). This is for two years, three years?
It's three years.
But here in this three years, that's an option. Right now, they're .25.
Council, any more questions for Ava or any third? Thank you, Ava. Council, at this time, I entertain a motion to approve the bank depository contract beginning February 1st, 2014, and extending through January 31st, 2017, with the two one-year extension options.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Parsons. Do I have a second? I have a second by Councilman Allen. Any more discussion, council? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. That is approved. The next item is to consider and approve the lease agreement between the City of Granbury and BB&amp;T for the lease purchase of equipment listed in Exhibit A, which you see on your screen. David? David, you want to give us a little more background on this one, please?
Yes. The lease purchase agreement, the financing was given, offered to BB&amp;T back in December 2013, December 18th, 2013, and at this time, all we are doing is approving the lease agreement and signing the final contract. We had, we had the different equipment that were financed are the police vehicles for two years at a rate of one and a half, I mean, I'm sorry, 1.04 percent, and the rest of the equipment are being financed for five years at 1.5 percent.
Thank you, Ava. Yeah, now this is the third time we've brought this in front of the council, and we brought it at budget initially. We then bought it, brought it whenever we sent out the bids and awarded the financing and the financing terms, you approved it then, but the instructions last time was to bring it back to approve the lease agreement. I think going forward, it's okay. If the financing terms don't change and we are able to complete the lease agreement within the financing terms, there's no reason to bring it back a third time. Do you all agree with that? Is that a process we can agree to go forward, or do you want to look at the actual lease agreement for the third time?
I just assume not to see it a third time. We did discuss it and we're well within budget. I think our attorney has more lease experience than any others, and we prefer that that be the final look.
Okay.
And this one here is at the end. So going forward, and I think we already approved the resolution or whatever for it, but we can...
And only if the financing terms should change would we bring it back. In other words, as long as the lease agreement reflects the financing terms we discussed at the approval time, then that's the last time we'll bring it back.
Just trying to get the process a little more efficient.
Council, any more questions for Ava?
I have one, Mayor.
Councilman Allen.
This is a lease purchase, right?
Yes.
End of the five years, we buy it for a dollar.
Yes, that's how it's going to be set up, yes.
Okay. My concern is this. On the trucks and stuff, five years is probably fine. Am I too loud?
No, you're not.
Never. Never too loud?
Never.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. But on police cars, how many miles do we put on them a year?
Those are, the police cars, we are financing for two years.
Two years?
Mm-hmm. Everything else for five.
Okay.
And that's about the useful.
Yeah, that's, well, I read where part of it was two and part of it was, but I didn't understand which one was which on the five. That's no problem. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ava.
Thank you.
Council, any more discussion on this issue? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the lease agreement between the City of Granbury and BB&amp;T for the lease purchase of the equipment that we've listed in Exhibit 8.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilwoman Myers. Any more discussion, council? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That lease agreement is approved. Our next item is to consider and approve the closure of streets for various events and festivals during 2014. Council, I'll go through these one at a time, and we'll go ahead and vote on them, if that's okay with you guys. The first one being for the Texas Independence Day Celebration and Parade. We're going to be closing sections of Bridge and Crockett from 5:00 PM on Friday, February 28th, 2014, through 6:00 PM on Sunday, March 2nd, 2014, and also sections of Bridge, Crockett, and Pearl Street on Saturday, March 1st, 2014, from 10:45 AM until 12:00 PM. Council, any discussion on that particular day of the street closure?
On Pearl Street?
Councilman Allen?
On Pearl Street, Mayor, don't, is that a text dotted deal or is that a...
It's text dotted. But we approve it and then the text that requires us to approve it before they'll...
Any more discussion on the Texas Independence Day Celebration Parade?
Glad to have it in town. Thanks to God, the people that are putting this together.
Great event.
You're doing a good job.
Great event. If not, I entertain a motion to approve the street closures for the Texas Independence Day Celebration Parade.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilperson Parson, Purple, I'll tease up here. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Allen. Any more discussion, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The closures for the Texas Independence Day Celebration are approved. Our next one being the General Granbury Birthday Celebration and Parade. The closings will be sections of Bridge and Crockett from 5:00 PM on Friday, March 14th, 2014, through 6:00 PM on Sunday, March 16th, 2014, and also a section of Bridge and Crockett and Pearl Street on Saturday, March 15th, 2014, from 11:45 AM until 12:45 PM. Pretty much the same with streets, different times. Council, any discussion on this particular one? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the street closures for General Granbury Birthday Celebration and Parade.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Parsons. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilwoman Myers. Any more discussion, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That street closure is approved for General Granbury Day. The next one being for the Granbury Wine Walk. The closures of the alleyway, West Bridge Street, and West Pearl Street from 8:00 AM on Friday, April 25th, 2014, through 8:00 PM on Saturday, April 26th, 2014, and sections of South Houston Street within the one-block section between Pearl Street and Bluff Street from 8:00 AM on Friday, April 25th, 2014, through 8:00 PM on Saturday, April 26th, 2014, and sections of East Bridge Street on, from 8:00 AM on Friday, April 25th, 2014, through 8:00 PM on Saturday, April 26th, 2014. Council, any discussion on the street closures and alley closure for the Granbury Wine Walk? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the closures for the Granbury Wine Walk.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Parsons. Any more discussion, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The Granbury Wine Walk closures are approved. Our next item, council, is the, consider the appointments to the city boards. As you know, every year we go through the, a lot of the boards come due, and we have a list of them. You've had an opportunity to look at this list of them. Most of the people want to continue to serve on their existing boards, but we do have one of them that is, that we have a person that has a new applicant, and that is for the Historic Preservation Commission. What I'd like to do at this time, council, is to take that new applicant... I would like to take this new applicant, which being Carrie Bellamy, was our new applicant. You've all had an opportunity to look over her application, and at this time, I would like to take and go ahead and ask for a motion to accept Carrie Bellamy as the new applicant for the Historic Preservation Commission. And once we do that, then we'll go through the remaining people and select three more people for the openings that are already there, and all those people have expressed an interest to stay.
Mayor?
Well, I'm not falling.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilman Allen.
I was going to ask the same thing that Councilperson Parsons was. You're saying you want us to vote to put her on?
We can, we can do it two different ways, council. We can take and we can vote for four openings with five people, one being the new person. Everybody following me? Or we can vote on the new person to see if we want the new person in. Once the new person gets in, then we will be voting for three positions with four people.
Okay.
Now, I guess I might ask which way the council wants to go on this. The first way is, and the reason being, it gives the new person an opportunity to be selected for the board. A lot of our board members are willing to stay on, which I appreciate that wholeheartedly because at times it's hard to get board members on there, and I appreciate their feeling that. filling those positions. But I also, in turn, like to see the opportunity for somebody new to come on to the board. So the reason I was suggesting that we do it this way was to give that new person an opportunity, if the council sees that right, to go ahead and vote, to put the new person in, and then the remaining people that we have that are expressed an interest, we could vote on those, which we have our sheets there beside us.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Parsons, you want to say something, there? Go ahead.
I would, we have a piece of paper here that relates to Historic Preservation Committee with
Exactly.
Five names on it, I would prefer that we mark off on those and turn those in, and the four people selected on that are elected. And then, as far as the other boards are concerned, we just have a single motion that reelects all those that apply.
I'm, I'm good with that. Counsel, are you okay with that? All in favor of that?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, then, counsel, if you would fill out your sheets, we'll pass them down to the left and give them to E. What we're doing, we're going ahead and selecting four people for the preservation, the Historic Preservation Commission, out of five names.
This may be voting about three times.
Yeah. Counsel, I may remind the council that at this time, I do not have a vote unless it be a tie.
Oh, okay.
Oh.
All of us stand.
You wondering who's not here? Okay, the council has voted. The results of the vote is, our members will be the present members that have expressed an interest to stay on, Shirley Hooks, Bob Pennell, Kate Collerant, Ann Stan, Waszczeliski. Well, Waszczeliski, there you go.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that we vote in all returning board members that apply.
I have a motion to vote in all the returning board members on the Historic Preservation Commission, and Councilperson Parsons, I would like to go ahead and go through each one of these individually.
Okay, that's fine. I will limit that vote to Historic then.
So I have a motion to vote all the existing members back on for the Historic Preservation Commission, that being Shirley Hooks, Bob Pennell, Kate Collerant, and Stan Waszczeliski. Do I have a second? Looking for a second.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Allen. Any more discussion, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those appointments for the Historic Preservation have been approved. Now, I'd like to go through each one of them individually, I may, each one of the boards, and approve the, the people that have expressed an interest to stay on these boards. The first one being the Airport Board. We have Timothy Rothenbusch, Andy Rash, and Monty Johnson, as terms are coming up, and they have, and they have selected to stay on. I'm looking for a motion to retain those people on the Airport Board.
So moved.
I have, I have a motion by Councilman Parsons. Do I have a second? I have a second by Councilman Purple. More discussion on the Airport Board, counsel? All in favor of retaining those folks, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That Airport Board is approved. The next one being the Building Standards, Plumbing, and Adjustments and Appeals Board. We have three, three people on this board that expires and have expressed an interest to stay on. David Zunker, Billy Reason, and Russell Pruitt. I entertain a motion to retain those folks on the Standard, Plumbing, Adjustments, and Appeals Board. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilwoman Myers. Any more discussion? All in favor of retaining those folks, you say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those people are retained on the Building Standards, Plumbing, Adjustments, and Appeals Board. Our next one being the Cemetery Board. We have two applicants there that have expressed an interest to stay on. Sylvia Campbell and Burton Burks.
Mayor, I don't, I don't have, I don't mind. I have vacancy.
Yeah, Mr. Burks is, he is ill, he has been ill for a long time, because we have no new applicants to fill that spot.
So he will stay on?
He does, he does, but apparently, he hasn't been there, well, they don't meet that often either, and he's been ill for quite a while. That's why we put his name on there, he's never been replaced.
So, what we're saying, we've never had a contact with him, whether or not he wanted to stay on or not, he's been ill for so long, okay, I got you there. Counsel, we probably ought to take a look at that, because on, on these boards, going forward, after we get the selections of all the boards, just FYI, we, we plan on having some, some meetings with all the board people and, and get to know the board members a little better and, and find out exactly, you know, the things that they're doing, when they're meeting, and how, you know, how, how the board works for us also. So, going forward, I think we should go ahead and entertain looking at this vacancy here and possibly posting that one for a while, too, D. So why don't we leave that one with a vacancy, and we'll go ahead and look at Sylvia Campbell, who's expressed a desire to stay on, and we'll entertain a motion to retain Sylvia Campbell and to post the vacancy for Burton Burks.
So moved.
We have, I have a motion by Councilperson Myers. Do I have a second? And a second by Councilperson Purple. Any more discussion, council? So all in favor? All in favor of the Cemetery Board selections, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Cemetery Board selections are approved, and we will reach out and post the vacancy for Burton Burks. The next one being the Historic... Our next one being the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. We have three applicants there that have expressed an interest to stay on, that being Julia Pennell, Kay Waszczelaski, and Joe Parker. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to retain those folks on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Parsons. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second by Councilman Allen? Any more discussion, council?
Yeah, you reckon Joe could get UFO to play a concert for us?
Yeah, dude, that's a pretty good article there, wasn't it?
That was a good article.
You have a son called Allen in Granbury. All in favor of Julie Pennell, Kay Waszczelaski, and Joe Parker staying on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those folks will retain on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Our next one being the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have three, I'm sorry, four applicants that have expressed a interest to staying on, that being Steve Gearhart, Barry House, Kathy Briscoe, and Lee Daniels. I'd entertain a motion to retain those four people on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Counsel, do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a, I have a motion by Councilwoman Myers?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Allen. Any more discussion, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those people will be retained on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Our next one being the Zoning Board of Adjustments. This one, counsel, we do have one that has resigned, and I would, I would sure like to get in contact with Ms. Bellamy, maybe, and see if she would like to go on to this board, but needless to say, we have posted this one, and nobody's come forward, so we still have a, an opening in the Zoning Board of Adjustments. But we also have three, three board members who have expressed an interest to stay on, and at this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept their bids to stay on, that being Betty Jacobs, Jim Leach, I'm sorry, Jim Lynch, and Ronnie Wong. Tom Distico has resigned. So we got three, three members there, three board members, Ronnie Wong, Jim Lynch, and Betty Jacobs, that have expressed an interest to stay on. I'll entertain a motion to accept them.
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilman Allen. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Parsons. Any more discussion, council? All in favor of retaining those board members for the Zoning Board of Adjustments, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Mayor, could I, could I make a suggestion?
Go ahead, Councilman Allen.
Thank you. You know, I look at the paper, and I hardly ever pay attention to that part where they're advertised, and I wish that, we normally do this in December, I think, when we reappoint our boards.
Well, they're expired in December, right?
I wish that if it's December or January, I wish we would run a, a half-page ad or better. It costs a little bit of money, but you know, as a lot of people says, well, I'd like to be on that board or that committee, and they don't know nothing about it till it's already happened. It's not our fault, it's not, it's not your fault, but not mine. But I think if we would take and, and run a half-page ad, and maybe put down, like, building standards, you know, they live in a city, they can be on it, don't live in a city, you know, historical, they gotta live in the historical area, until, you know, they meet once a month, twice a month, I think we'd get a lot more interest in people. Nothing wrong with the boards we got, but I think we'd get a lot more nominations to come in that would like to be part of our city, and I wish we would do that the next time. That's my suggestion.
Thank you, Councilman Allen, and you know, along those lines, as I, as I stated, we'd like to have a little, a get-together with all the board members and discuss some of the things that they do, and even identify those folks that are on those boards, so this may be something that we'd want to reach out to those folks, talk to them about what we could do better, or how we could reach out to get people's involvement on these boards, and, and you're exactly right, Councilman Allen, there's a lot of folks that don't know that these boards exist, or what they even do, and, and when they do find out, they're, you know, they might say, well, you know, I wish I was selected for this, so we could probably do it a little better at advertising and also reaching out amongst ourselves and getting some people involved in these. So hopefully, with this and, and some suggestions like Councilman Allen's brought forward here, we could, we could get some people to step up and say, you know, I want to be a part of these forces. They're all very important boards, or, or we wouldn't have them, but, and they all work really hard to do the things, to help, to help the council and to help the city do what we have to do, so hopefully, we can get some good input there. Right now, we are nominating, or we're going ahead, I guess we done did the zoning one, right? We are done with the board selection, so thank you very much, counsel. At this time, at this time, if there's no further discussions with the council, we'll adjourn the council meeting.
It's almost like that music was, uh...